Good evening. I would like to call to order the Kaiser City Council to order on Monday, September 18th, 2017, and ask our city recorder to please call roll.
Counselor Freeman?
She is excused.
Counselor Ryan?
Here.
Counselor Reed?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Counsel President Parsons?
She is also excused.
Counselor Herrera?
Here.
And Counselor Anderson?
He is excused. So we have three people who are traveling for, a couple for business funds for pleasure, so with that, all with notice.
And Youth Counselor Hernandez?
Here.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we are going to start off with, it's under committee reports, but I think it's a pretty special order of business, and that would be the Volunteer of the Quarter Award, and I will turn it over to Chief T., please.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I could have Jackie Wolf, Joseph Haggard, and Tracy Moore come up front, please, I'd appreciate it. They're just going to come up front and stand behind the chairs. Back in the back is Dorothy Deal, who is our Fleet Manager and our Community Outreach Specialist, and she, Lieutenant Lance Emmon, who's in New Jersey, not in Oregon, nominated Jackie, Tracy, and Joseph for this award. Let me read a brief citation from Lance. He says, "Since September 2016, Jackie, Joseph, and Tracy have contributed an incredible amount of time and effort toward meeting several important needs of the Kaiser Police Department's Fleet Services Program. They inspect, restock, and clean the vehicles inside and out, as well as troubleshoot mechanical issues, transport vehicles for services, respond to a wide array of requests, and participate in planning and decision-making discussions. They also provide periodic support to other areas of the department, including support services and traffic safety. Without the work of these volunteers, the Kaiser Police Department would need to commit significantly more time, staff time, and resources to inspect, clean, and transport cars, as well as deploy the radar trailers weekly, run errands, and manage fleet data and records. The work of these volunteers also helps ensure that police vehicles are safe and well-equipped with the tools officers need to serve the citizens of Kaiser." We get about a half of an FTE out of these three good people, and to boot that, they've become like family. So we're very happy to recognize them. Thank you.
Well, and it is also our pleasure to thank you so much for your tremendous gift of volunteerism. For each of you, we have a clock that represents the time that you invest in our police department and our community. The City of Kaiser Volunteer of the Quarter, Second Quarter 2017, and I have these for each of you. So I'll come around here with the chief, and we'll make the presentation. The last thing I want to do is drop these. I'll need help with the boxes. Okay, got that? Jackie, thank you so much for your service. Next, we have Joseph Haggard. Thank you so much for your service. The last, after that, is Tracy Moore. We also have the boxes. Okay. Counselor Herrera?
I just want to acknowledge, you know, I've known Joseph for a long time, and I've seen Jackie forever. That's what they did when we were in Lily. They were always helping. Is that right, Jackie? You were always there on the workdays, so it doesn't surprise me that you earned these honors. I'm really impressed. Thank you very much, Joseph, and all of you.
Any other comments? It is really appropriate for us to thank, recognize volunteers. What makes Kaiser such a unique and powerful community is how we all choose to get involved in a very realistic and hands-on way. So thank you again for our Volunteers of the Quarter. From there, I think we'll go talk to some other volunteers, and that will be some of our committee reports. I have three folks signed up tonight, and we'll start off with the Parks Board Report and Clint Holland. There you are, your bright shiny face. No, you can't hide.
Thank you very much for letting me appear here tonight. The Parks Board didn't do much this month here. We just had a short meeting. Before that, on Monday, some of the City Council members joined us to look at some of the different parks that we went to with the Parks Board Advisory Group. And that's good to do that every year, because if you're looking at doing things in these parks, it's good to go see them firsthand. So then the next night, we had testimony, and in regards to the priorities of the things that need to be done with this new fee that we're going to have, and we had testimony. One of the things that came up several times was the dog park. They want to put more fountains in the dog park. They want to get a couple more there, but that went well. The testimony went well. So I'd also like to talk just for a few minutes about the solar eclipse weekend. I thought that went very well for all the obstacles that we had to go through. There was a lot of people on the Parks Board Advisory Group, that foundation, that really put in a lot of time. It was unbelievable, the time they put in. And I don't mean just four or five hours. Some of them were there 12, 14 hours a day. Even David Loudon, after we got all done, sometimes you don't get a lot of help after it's over with, but somebody has to stay around to clean. He was there for two days, working on everything. So you might tell him thank you for all the extra work that he did. The concerts went well. We had a world-class event there on Sunday night that I probably will never be able to ever do again, and it was just incredible. We had a violinist that was there that has played several times at Carnegie Hall. The Celtic Celts, he's played there. He's billed at Nashville. He travels all over the world. Right now, he does a lot of the cruise liners, that he does his performance there. Before he came here on Sunday, he was up in Alaska on the cruise up there. So that was a first-class event, and a lot of things went wrong that night. The paper, not Kaiser Times, did a great job all week, but the statesman printed that that was a free event. It wasn't supposed to, so that got kind of expensive for that performance, because we had to turn around, because it was printed that way, and not charge anybody. But it helped us, because a lot of people that were camping there weren't there at the event. So talked to Marlene, we went down there, told everybody it's free, filled the place up real good. And did they get a performance? It was second to none. And I hope someday I could get this guy back again. But when he played "Alba Maria," I mean, everybody stood at attention. But this guy was a world-class violinist. So, and then the last event we had was, and by the way, I would like to recognize Robert Johnson, because we had some trouble with the chemical toilets, and we hadn't placed some of them in the wrong places and stuff, and we had some that weren't used. So he came down on his own time, and he helped me get these chemical toilets moved to places where they were needed. And I can't thank him enough for all the stuff that he's done. So, anyway. Our last event was JFK, Joel Kenny, and the mayor was there. I had to ask the mayor to help me, because so many guys were tired that night. She stayed and helped us clean up that night. And, but boy, what a performance he did. Took him two days to set all the lighting up on the stage. It was unbelievable. He had to stay overnight. It rained on us during the performance. Nobody left. They stayed there. And that was quite an event. It was good to end that. We had, I don't know, just a little over 1,000 people there for that event. Not as much as we had the year before when he was there, but worked out really good. So that's all I have, unless somebody has questions.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions for Clint? I've got one. So with the people who want to give their input on how the parks repair and maintenance should happen, email, watch on Facebook, you know, we want to hear from people about what you think needs to happen in the park near you, or the park that you like to use. We want to make sure that the things that we get done are the things that need done. Just because something is a certain shape or size right now doesn't mean that we have to replace it exactly as is. We can make changes based on what the needs of the community are now. But the only way we're going to know is if we hear from everybody. So Clint, you and the Parks Board want to hear, and if people want to get ahold of you or anybody on the council or Parks Board, make sure you get emails to us.
Yeah. Bill, are we going to have another session, open session, where people can testify like they did Tuesday?
I'm not sure if the board's planning on that or not, Clint. I have not heard yet.
Yeah, I haven't heard either. So.
There's going to be more outreach. Yes, yes, there is going to be more outreach. I'm not sure if it's going to be at the Parks Board, but there's going to be additional outreach. But email is a great way to get your observations into the Parks Board, as we do the prioritization, because the more eyes on the parks, the more we know what's going on and what needs done, and what the community wants to see happen in our parks. They belong to all of us. There are 19 parks that all belong to us all.
Yeah.
Counselor Herrera?
First of all, thank you, Clint, for all the time you spend down there. I really appreciate it, and the community does. Once again, I want to emphasize what the mayor said, in terms of our parks. Those of you that live by them, and I'm talking to everybody who are watching this, you can be very helpful if you always drive by and say, "It'd be cool if this park had this," or "They really need this." Your voice should be heard, because you are the expert of the park near you. And you're the one that knows that park best. If you use it, it'd be very helpful. Well, as well-intentioned as people are, sometimes we need help. So, and I'm talking about the parks people.
No, the other thing that was nice, when we went on the parks tour, we got to see immediately, the volunteers got the soccer nets up and got it all lined out, all painted. So that was good to see that they moved that fast on it.
And it's my understanding also, thank you, Clint, but it's my understanding, there's going to be another event where we can have an opportunity, and talking to Matt, I think there's going to be another opportunity to let people know what you think about, what needs to be done in the parks. So that's very critical. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Jim Jacks to report on the Planning Commission.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Clark and members of the council. The Planning Commission has been busy, and you should know that the planning staff keeps us very busy. Probably more busy than we would like sometimes, but for Nate and Shane to be the two primary people that do all the work that comes to us, they are really going overboard. We're in the midst of reviewing the sign code, the regulations for signage, and we took a look at the regulations last month, and then just last week, and we'll have our third and final, hopefully final, look this coming month. And so I'm not going to go into the details, but the things that we're looking at are the amortization program and non-conforming signs. Shannon's going to do some additional research on that for us for the meeting next month. And then the next category, so to speak, is election signs. Some of these things where you're not supposed to be regulating content go to a most recent U.S. Supreme Court case, Reed versus the City of Gilbert, Arizona. And so we're taking a look at what we do with signs that are allowed during election season, so to speak. Another category that brings in the, don't regulate the content of a sign issue, is real estate signs. And then moving on, another category is window signs, signs that are displayed in windows. The next category is portable and temporary signs. All of these sign issues, you can get into the minutia very quickly, and it just chews up an awful lot of time. And frankly, there's a lot of issues to discuss when it's free speech versus something else. The last issue that we're dealing with is electronic message signs, and particularly the timeframe that they, that each message is displayed. So it looks like there's going to be a reduction in the time that they have to be displayed. And so I guess with that, the commission will be back at it next month with more discussion and information. And my current term ended last week, and so this is my last opportunity to say hi to the council and brief you on what the council, or what the commission is busy with. But I would imagine sometime in the future, I may get on Planning Commission again, although currently, we have volunteers that are being appointed to vacancies. So who knows? I may be looking at some other committee. Any questions?
Nate?
Just one small correction. It may not be next month. So we have, the issues are complex, and we are trying to work through the legal issues, and how we can possibly squeeze some decent regulations within the context of the Supreme Court decision. So it may take us working together more than a month to come back to you on that.
Well, and that doesn't mean the commission might not meet, because this last winter, spring, and summer, things, if we needed, were put on a back burner for a month, but then staff would have something else for us. So the staff really does a good job keeping the Planning Commission busy.
Well, and you guys do an amazing job of that minutia, especially the sign code is something that can, yeah, there's a general groan on that one, can initiate tremendous debate very quickly from every point of view possible. So we really appreciate the hard work you, in particular, and the expertise that you have brought to the Planning Commission. A lot of people, when they volunteer, want to do something different than their day job. But you are doing an extension of your day job in planning, and your expertise has really been a great benefit to the commission. So thank you so much for your many years of service. We appreciate you.
Well, thank you very much.
Counselor Ryan?
Thank you. I too want to thank you for your service as well, because it's been invaluable. I have, I'm curious if anyone's discussed with you the signage with marijuana shops and the dispensaries. Is that, has that been a conversation? I realize we, as a council, voted on that actually prior to this council, but is that a discussion at all? Because that's probably the biggest complaint I hear.
Yeah, well, not so far. It's, you know, those are retail outlets, so they follow the regulations that any retail outlet would follow, just because it's a particular product.
We have different, we have a different regulation than Salem does on that, though, regarding what they can display. For example, a medical cross versus a marijuana leaf.
Well, yeah, and it might be that some cities have, well, in some cities, their sign regulations go by each zone. In Kaiser, our regulations go by, you know, residential uses, commercial uses, industrial uses. So there might be something going on at other cities that has caused them to address signage for a particular type of retail product differently.
But it hasn't come up in your conversations?
Not, not a big issue.
Actually, the marijuana shops signage is covered under the marijuana, our marijuana regulations. It's not, it's a, it's a special category, and so it's not within the sign chapter, sign code chapter. So it's not part of the current discussion. That would be part of the work that you do frequently on marijuana issues.
So it's a separate conversation?
A separate conversation.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Thanks again, Jim, and all the best, and we know where you live.
Where you meet and wherein you meet.
Yes, indeed. And I'm sure they can call you for advice. Jill, you want to talk to us about the Kaiser Points of Interest Committee, please? It's great to see you.
Madam Mayor, committee members, I'm here to talk about the flood history signs that are now installed at Kaiser, and my reason for being here is I want to give a big shout out and a thank you to Salem Concrete and Randy Miller. Randy Miller.
Yep, she's right there.
Thank you for all of their hard work, their volunteer efforts, and the materials, and for putting in our signs and getting them all set up for us. If it wasn't for them, the public would not be able to see the history of the floods here in Kaiser. And if you haven't seen them yet, please go out and visit. The committee had a really good time, a lot of fun making, putting the signs together. So I'm here to say thank you, and a big shout out to Salem Concrete and Randy Miller. Thank you.
Awesome. Any questions for Jill? Go ahead. So there is one opening on that committee?
I believe there's, is there an opening still for the committee? Marlene, I believe there is.
Tracy says yes.
Oh, there is, okay. I know we filled one. I wasn't sure if we filled them all. So, okay.
Yeah, we're still one short, aren't we? That's correct. So, and so, anybody interested? Talk to Jill.
All right. Do any other questions? So what projects are you guys working on coming up?
We're working on the Savage House, some signage for the Savage House, if and when they ever get started, or what they're going to do. We are going to be making something, I don't know if it's a kiosk, or something that we're going to put on the property whenever it is built. Yeah. So we'll be working on that.
So anybody who wants to learn about what the history of our, our community, our region, Kaiser Points of Interest has done some amazing and creative work, looking at everything from the 45th parallel to the flood poles, to so many other points around our city that we can really celebrate our history. The Marie Dorian, the Japanese Americans, so many other places around town. So thank you to you and your committee for the great work you do.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. That concludes the committee reports. The liaison reports from the council will come later in the evening, and that will now take us to public testimony. This time is provided for the citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda scheduled for public hearings. And we have one public hearing tonight, that is a minor amendment to the Kaiser Station Area A Master Plan. We have some folks who are signed up to talk about the gravel pit shooting range and so forth. And what I would like to do with the indulgence of the folks who are here to talk about that is to get an update from our police chief on this issue. Would you all be okay with that prior to me calling you forward? Okay, chief?
Yeah, so for the listeners on television that aren't familiar with this, there's a quarry across the river from Kaiser, and it's frequently used for target practice and such. Causes noise, and occasionally, a stray round will come over into Kaiser. Recently, a number of stray rounds came over into Kaiser. They called us, we called Polk County, or maybe y'all called Polk County, too. We worked with them, identified who was over there. We could not determine that a crime was committed, but we did braid the shooters and remind them again of assuring that they have a decent backdrop. We thought that maybe that was the end of what we could do. I contacted the Polk County Sheriff's Office. Shannon contacted the Polk County Attorney, Morgan Smith, right, and they were going to see what they could do through their council because of that property. By the way, that, by the way, is in the, it's in Polk County, not in the City of Salem. Since then, Andrew Copeland, our patrol supervisor, got on the Polk County assessor's logs, figured out who the landowner was, and called him. It's Douglas Davis or Lance Davis. He's the owner of Northwest Rock. He was very cooperative and apologetic. He has a shooting range over there. It's used by a number of people, including by Salem PD. And he said he's going to, he's going to reorient people that are shooting toward part of the berm that does not face Kaiser. So that should solve all of the stray rounds problem. He did caution us, though, that there's sometimes a shooting that happens at night, and that is them out there trying to kill nutria that eat away at his irrigation wires. So if you're shooting at night, that's what's going on over there. So that's, that's our update, and that's about what we think we can do. Andrew Copeland and Mr. Davis set up a good relationship, so if you have concerns, you can get ahold of us, and we'll get ahold of Mr. Davis.
All right. Thank you very much. I really appreciate the follow-through on this and the ongoing attention that will go toward anything further in this property. So with that, I would like to go ahead and call up people who have signed up for public testimony, so you can ask additional questions and express your concerns. So just in the order I was handed, the papers. Shirley, DeShawn, you're first up.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Excuse me.
So just state your name and city of residence for the record.
Yes. Shirley DeShawn, and I reside at 3985 Rivercrest Drive North in Kaiser, and I have for the last 47 years been in Kaiser. Thank you for this opportunity. Madam Mayor, honored council members, and honored staff, and Chief T., I know you all have the safety of all Kaiser citizens at heart. I know you take this matter very seriously. And thank you for letting me be here. This, to the residents and to non-residents, this is a real urgent matter. Now, I'm speaking on behalf of residents from Sunset, excuse me, I'm sorry, from Sunset, Rivercrest, Raphael, Dennis, and Shoreline. So, and most of us live on or near the river. Located, as chief stated, located across from the river is this gravel pit. And for years, they have been shooting, you know, on and off fairly recently, you know, fairly frequently. I mean, you can hear shotguns, pistols, rifles, and we're okay with that. However, on Sunday, September 10th, they, we heard, what I heard was an automatic weapon. And you can hear, it's like 100 shots in, like that. And it was again, and then stopped for a while, and then hit it again. Anyway, there have been several, I guess the fully automatic weapon issue really scares me, or semi-automatic. I know you can modify an AR-15 in a matter of seconds and make it from semi-automatic to automatic. And I, it's just a sad state of affairs. Anyway, so there have been several instances in our neighborhood. Now, I'm Neighborhood Watch Captain of the Sunset Rivercrest Group. To state a few incidents, a few years ago, two neighbors were standing in their backyard, and bullets began whizzing by their heads. And it was Mike Steiers and Tom Griffin, and they both hit the dirt. Then a couple years ago, also, I noticed there was, it was posted on Facebook, in fact, a man pulled a .45 caliber bullet out of his garage roof. Then we come to the last incident, on Sunday, April, or Sunday, September 10th. The shooting started out to what sounded like an automatic weapon, and I'm going to read this, so I don't miss anything. A neighbor who was in the street said the bullet ricocheted off of Sunset. And we noticed people kept exiting the park quickly. And one of the persons, one of the individuals stated, "The bullets are hitting the trees." Now, this is City of Kaiser's park. So I ended up, six neighbors coming over. I also called 911, as did several others. Fortunately, the Marine Patrol was on the water, and they were there, like, maybe eight minutes. They were in the water and there, and tromped through the berm to get up to where they were shooting. And then two PD units also rolled on it. And then two PD units also rolled on it. And I understand that no action can be taken unless someone says, "Yes, it was me, I had a fully automatic weapon, I'm not licensed, and I was shooting trap," which is what I understand from one officer, what they were doing with an AR-15 was shooting trap. So when you're shooting trap, you're going to have bullets that are falling. And it's not pellets from a shotgun, these are bullets. And this particular one was an AR-15, is I understand. Correct me if I'm wrong, sir. Anyway, it was case number, in case somebody wants to check it out, it's case number 17-2097. Kaiser has invested an enormous amount of volunteer hours, work, and money, and time, and effort going to some, making some magnificent parks that are on the riverfront, and that's one of our crown jewels. And we live next to the, to one of them, in Sunset Park. And, I'm sorry.
Give a minute.
All right. Now, I understand, like I say, I lost my place, okay. Anyway, these parks, and the people who frequent these parks, plus the citizens, the residents, which many of them are here tonight thankful, thankfully, their safety is in your hands, and I know you take that very seriously, and for that, we're grateful. But unfortunately, as individuals, whether we're visitors to a park, or whether we're residents on the riverfront, we cannot influence this particular property owner to take any action. But you, as a council, can, and I know you are taking action, and I appreciate that, all of us do. However, with that being, with that being said, I would like to request that a letter be proposed by Shannon, the city attorney, and endorsed by the council, and explaining to the, and sent to the property owner, and explaining the liability involved, and also the consequences. I hear you.
Go ahead and finish your statement.
It's going to stop in a second, okay. That it request all the targets shooting, all the practice shooting, all the firearms, that they cease and desist immediately. And I don't want to have to wait until somebody is shot. We all have children, grandchildren, and ourselves, and great-grandchildren that go out there and they play on the river. And we board, we ski, we get on our boats and do whatever, and we're always out there. And it's just a matter of time. If this continues, that someone is going to get hit, and someone's going to get shot. Thank you for your time. Are there any questions?
All right, any questions for Shirley? And I want to thank you. It sounds like you've been talking with your neighbors. Do you have signatures or something? You said you were speaking for people in your area. Is that through your neighborhood watch, or through a petition?
I don't have signatures. I just have neighbors who heard the shots.
And I know you have...
We have other neighbors that are going to speak to that and to address to this issue, if that's possible.
Oh, absolutely. I have people signed up and so forth, and absolutely, we take this very seriously. Our parks and the river are public spaces, and they are expected, expected, to not have bullets go flying by.
Right. I mean, when they're running out the gate saying, you know, "The bullets are hitting the trees," it's really frightening, so, thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next, I have Terry Moore and Merrily Moore.
Hi, I'm Terry Moore. I live on Dennis Lane in Kaiser, 699 Dennis Lane. We live a block south and across the street from Sunset Park. I believe it was Sunday, the 10th, my wife and I were in the backyard, and we heard gun shooting, or what we thought, well, I was hoping it was fireworks, I didn't know what it was. But it was rapid enough and loud enough and constant enough to where I got, I wanted to walk down and see what was happening. I thought potentially it was one of the neighbors doing something, I didn't know. As I approached the park, I saw a couple, probably in their 30s, running from the park saying, "There's bullets hitting the trees." As I walked further, another neighbor came down Sunset saying, "There's bullets hitting the street." When I walked up to Shirley's house, her husband, Darrell, was out front, and I said, "Do you have any idea what's going on?" He said, "No." So I turned, and the people that were sort of gathering, I said, "I'm going to call 911." I hope everyone does. It was very disheartening and scary. As I was approaching their house, I actually heard a couple of bullets. I don't know how far a bullet needs to be from you for you to hear it, but I heard things whizzing through the air. So it was very scary and disheartening to me. So I didn't know Shirley was putting together this letter or requesting a letter, but I second that. So thanks for listening. Any questions?
Any questions? And thank you for coming tonight and sharing your concerns. Absolutely take this very, very seriously. Ma'am?
And I'm Merrily Moore. I'm his wife at the same address, 699 Dennis Lane North. And as he said, we were in the backyard, and, you know, I felt immediately that it was, this was way different than what we normally hear across the river, and, I mean, much louder, much more present. I initially, it was so loud that I thought it was on our side of the river initially. And Terry got involved, as he said, ended up calling 911. We live on the corner of Rivercrest and Dennis, so I went over to our gate, and we're a block away from that park, as he mentioned, but people were literally running down the road. I mean, neighbors were coming out of their houses in fear, because it was so loud, and clearly a high-powered weapon, if, you know, we see enough TV, if nothing else. I mean, it was, people were very frightened, and I know that someone who called 911 actually lived a block east of us at Fifth and Dennis. It was that loud and that scary, that far away. So this is, this was not the typical thing that we hear, rat-a-tat. This was a whole different level, and a whole different, different level of neighborhood fear and concern. And as I said, really, out on Rivercrest, the people going down the street, they couldn't get away from the river fast enough. It's a street of walkers. Many people take their dogs out, and a lot of people out, and they were literally, people were afraid and running away from the river. So it was very serious. So it would be really nice if something could be done to address this, given that there is a residential area really close to that supposed rural area across the river.
Absolutely.
So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much for coming tonight. We really appreciate it.
I do want to add, maybe I didn't mention that it was a rapid fire. I don't know an automatic from a semi-automatic from, but it was, it sounded like Bruce Willis was across the river. Thank you.
Thank you, although he's much more responsible. Dennis, you stood up, so you're up. Dennis Richardson.
Darrell.
Oh, Darrell, I'm sorry, Darrell.
I was, yeah.
Dennis, anyway. Darrell. I know who you are, that's okay. Clint calls me Lori, so it's one of those nights.
Yeah, we've done enough dirty jobs together, haven't we, Kathy?
I think so.
Okay. My name is Darrell Richardson. I live on Rivercrest Drive next to Sunset Park. This isn't the first time it's happened, it's the second time that's happened. I was home both times. Excuse me. And once is, you know, kind of a mistake, and it's kind of scary. Actually, it's real scary. Twice is really bad news, and if the city of Kaiser can't do something about it, I don't know, you know, what to do. I know there was bullets flying all over the place. I was in the front yard, and I had the house between us, but still, I think, well, another thing I want to ask, do they have a permit to shoot over there? Doesn't the shooting range have to have a permit, a state permit, or?
I'm sure they don't. I mean, I'm sure they don't. I'm sure they don't have a permit, and I'm sure they're not required to have a permit.
Well, if they, a shooting range should, if it's not permitted, they should only be able to shoot like one shell at a time. It's not, you know, where you can go with automatic or semi-automatics.
Yeah, I just know that, I mean, personally owning rural property, I can shoot at my property all I want. I have a range on my property, I'm not required to get a permit to do it. I'm sure if you set up a business as a range, it requires a permit, but I don't recall there being any limitations. It doesn't necessarily mean it's the right thing to do to spray Kaiser with any gunfire, but there's no state regulations on that, as I, as I recall.
Well, if the city of Salem PD is using it, and I understand that SWAT team is using it, so, and other people, I don't think it's just the caretaker that's using it, I think it's quite a few other people, the way the shooting's carrying on. I would think that you would need to have a permit to do that. And so I just told the city of Kaiser can, or the city council, Madam Mayor, Shannon Johnson, whoever takes to say, "Hey, you know, enough bullets coming our way is enough." And I know, I don't want to see anybody get hurt, but if that's going to be the case, somebody has to get hurt before we shut them down? So do you have any questions? I hope you do. I hope somebody has, you know, the people in the city council, you know, I'm here speaking to you, I hope you have something to ask me about how I feel. Well, I mean, I kind of told you how I feel, but, you know, what you can do or talk about or discuss.
So one of the things, I do have questions, but they're mostly going to be directed towards the staff members on follow-up.
Sure.
So I want to hear from all of you, and Councilor Herrera has a question, but once we've heard from all of you, then I've been taking some notes about some things that we want to discuss, but I wanted to finish hearing from you guys first. Absolutely agree. There should, there is no excuse for this.
Right.
To happen, in my opinion, none.
And I know you, Madam Mayor, and you would take care of the situation.
As much as, to the best of my ability, I will do so. Councilor Herrera?
I just want you to know, Darrell, that we take this very seriously.
Thank you.
I can't imagine having my grandkids and bullets flying around, that's just not acceptable. And I know that we'll do everything we can in our power. And I don't know what the legality is across over there, but believe me, I think that we have good enough people that we're serious about this. And I appreciate your well presentation, Ruby and all of you, and not to mention your knowledge of guns, but really, this is serious stuff, and I take it completely serious, I'm sure we all do, and this is just not acceptable, and we'll do whatever we can in our power, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you very much, Darrell, for bringing that up.
I know you're going to have a lot of people discussing this tonight, so thank you much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. So Gary Blake, are you here to discuss this as well? Because this is park safety, so I'm assuming it's the same, same topic.
Madam Mayor and the city council, I just need a couple of seconds, because what I have heard tonight makes me very proud to be a resident of the city of Kaiser. I really appreciate the public people who have come to the WKNA. By the way, I'm here representing the West Kaiser Neighborhood Association, I'm the president, and we have four other representatives of the board here. And the reason we're here is because we feel a responsibility to help communication between the city and the residents of this city. And I am very proud to be a part of this process, because I think the concerns have been made very clear by the citizens, and the responses have been very good. I am really appreciative of the efforts that have been made by the city to get to the bottom of this issue, and I know there will be positive results. I've seen it happen before. So you are all to be commended, all the way from the citizens to the city council, and I'm glad to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gary, and thank you for your leadership with the Neighbor's Association. Are there any questions? All right, thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to address the council on public testimony, this or other issues? Come on down, sir, and just give us your name and city of residence.
So does this work?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
John Hinke, 671 Sunset Avenue, just two houses off of Rivercrest, right at the entrance of Sunset Park. I was standing in the street and had a bullet ricochet off the ground somewhere around 12 o'clock to 1 o'clock. And after everything settled down, I walked the street, then I walked my property, seeing if I could find, you know, a piece of broken rock or something, maybe bind the lead that stopped, but I couldn't. So it was interesting to find out what went on over there, and I understand that the guy shooting, none of them admitted to shooting the AR-15, but as Terry and Merrily said, that particular sound, that was a muzzle pointed in their east, and the shot, I've shot skeet, boom, 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 as that clay pigeon's floating across, and that's when the bullets came into the neighborhood. So this is also probably an issue for Salem, too. That part of town is grown, and there's a lot of apartments over there, which means kids out, so we orient the shooting from one direction to another. What hap, it takes that one stupid person to ruin it for everybody else, and in this case, it's been a couple. So Salem probably ought to be made aware of this, that what do you think, what do you want to do for your citizens? Or, you know, I don't know how Polk County and the Salem lines work, but, you know, their people live over there, too, and this could happen to them, so they need to be part of the discussion. So...
Absolutely right.
Yeah, and thank you, and for your follow-up and stuff, it was good to know that the property owners are willing to work. So just a matter of what, everybody comes together and goes, you know, enough's enough, or, you know, this is just, in the old days, this was fine, with all the housing and stuff. Now, it's just not going to work. So, hey, thank you all very much for what you do.
Thank you very much.
My name is Barb Smith. I'm John's wife. I also live at 671 Sunset Avenue. I think probably what I'm most concerned about is the, the fact that someone's going to get killed if something isn't done, and I'm just glad we're not sitting here talking about who got killed. And so when the powers that be tell us that, "Well, we couldn't identify, no one would admit to who was shooting the gun at the time, so we can't arrest anybody, blah, blah, blah." You know, if someone had been killed, would that be the case? Is that how it would be treated? Because it's going to happen if this doesn't stop. So that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to us on this issue in particular? If you, if you want to engage in public testimony on something else, I will invite you to come up in a minute, but I want to wrap this conversation up first. Mr. Holland, come on down.
I didn't come here tonight to talk about this, I didn't realize this was going on, but I live directly across where all the shooting's going on. And I'm not home very often, but when I am home, it's unbelievable, the shooting that's going on. There's about four or five of our houses going north that are directly across. Now, I haven't had any bullets come to my house that I know of, but two years ago, three years ago, you know, it wasn't too bad, because what it was, they were pheasant hunting down there and using only shotguns. Well, each year, this has progressed, getting worse every year. I was there maybe a week ago when it sounded like somebody had a Tommy gun, just shooting down there. I mean, truly, you have to come to the neighborhoods, Sunset and these different places, to really understand the shooting that's going on all the time, okay? And I'm worried, too, that sooner or later, one of these days, somebody's going to get hurt, but there's a lot of shooting going on, and it's just not, and the pheasant season hasn't started, I don't think yet, but these high-powered guns that are going on over there, I mean, just having a friend to your house scares them, you know, they hear all the shooting. You know, they hear all the shooting that's going on. It's kind of amazing. You're not going to hear the end of this with these people that are here today because it's gotten so bad that somehow the city council needs to do something on it. Thank you for your time.
Any questions? Councilor Ryan, did you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a follow-up. So, obviously, all of us live in Kaiser. I live up off of the lake on the other side by River Road, and I can hear it where I live. So, you're not alone. I can only imagine how loud it would be if I lived down where you all live. I guess, a couple of thoughts. I also am a gun owner, and I shoot often. And I, I know that the people I know are very, usually very respectful, and they're usually willing to say, wow, I didn't realize this, or I didn't know this. And it's possible, it's just, I don't want to say a big miscommunication, but if the property owner's willing to work with our police department, and it being at, it's not in Salem, Salem, I know it's not in Salem city limits. I know we can't do it, you know, a cease and assist, but I'm just wondering, you know, maybe there's a recommendation of, you know, at certain times that would be appropriate versus, you know, late at night when people are, it's scary. It's very scary to hear gunfire go off. And I think police gets a lot of calls on it because there are people who don't know what it is, and it's constantly on social media. I heard a gun. Did anybody hear the gun? I mean, you probably all have seen it. So, it's not a new issue, obviously. And I don't know, our hands are tied because, A, it's not Kaiser, and B, but it's a safety issue for Kaiser. So, I'm sure that the follow-up that you're doing, Chief, is going to be helpful, but maybe there could be some recommendations if the, and I believe the property owner's liable, even though that's his property. It's private property, as we all know how that works. He's still liable for his property. So, I'm sure that, it sounds like he's cooperative, and if people need to, maybe there's some signs, and they need to know that what's happening. Maybe they truly don't know the extent of the severity of it.
Maybe the owner himself doesn't know how bad it is. He doesn't probably live there. I don't know. Does he live on the property?
He does now.
Well, and it's a business.
I have no idea where he lives.
Okay.
It's a business. So, when you're hearing on the weekends, I don't think they're open. See what I'm saying? It's not like they're open on the weekends to...
What I'd like to do, though, is there, if I want to follow a couple of these threads as a council, but I'd like to hear from, from more folks who want to share about their experience or concerns before I follow these, these threads of conversation. So, thank you, Clint. Appreciate that. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to the council on this particular issue? Come on down. If you just give your name and your city of residence for the record.
Okay. I'm Judy Schnerbush, and I live in Kaiser. And I live next to Darrell Lynn Shirley. And a few years back, I don't know how long ago, maybe eight years, nine years, my daughter and I were down below by the river, and I was hearing bullets whiz by my head. I thought it was bottle rockets. It was like, and I didn't know what it was. So, I'm like, I'm going to go up. So, I brought my daughter up, and then we called the police, and they, at that time, too, they said the owner was very cooperative. And that's what scares me because now these bullets are coming back again. And at that time, a house about two blocks down had a bullet through their wall, from that incident that day. Any questions?
All right. Any questions? Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to, to speak?
The rest of them couldn't come. They couldn't make it.
Okay. But I think you, sure, come on down. I, I think you all have represented the concerns of the neighborhood very well.
I kind of want to say in response to what you said, it almost made it sound like we're scary without reason, like it was scary without reason. This was scary with very good reason. This isn't a matter of gee whiz, it's so noisy and upsetting. That wasn't what it was, and that's what, not what it was before. I mean, we have genuine causes for real concern, and I want you all to, this isn't a bunch of, you know, gee whiz. We're very, we are seriously being subjected to some real threat and that we don't deserve.
Nobody does.
And we're all, you know, we're reasonable people. So, I just want everybody to understand, this is a genuine threat. It's not just noise or something. So, thank you.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that very much. We are taking this very seriously.
Yes, thank you.
I've called 911 because of gunfire coming from the river as well. You know, I live in West Kaiser as well.
Thank you.
So, what I would like to do is, is there anybody else who would like to address us on this issue? Because I'd like to pursue a couple of threads of thought. Okay? And we can come back if you, if you have an idea. So, a couple of things have come up. One is the follow-through that we've done thus far, and Lieutenant Copeland is Lieutenant, right? I got that right. Thank you. Is going to continue in conversation with the owner because the point is well-taken that there is a liability there for that owner, even if he has, I don't care if there's permits or not, if somebody's on your property shooting, and with his knowledge that people are out there shooting, there's a liability there. So, not that that should be the driving force behind being responsible, but I think it would be important to really drive that point home, is that anything coming across, leaving his property is a liability. So, maybe this is a question to Shannon. Would it be appropriate for the city council to write a letter to the property owner reminding him that any bullets leaving the property entering the city of Kaiser is a liability, and we, we won't tolerate it?
Madam Mayor, my preference would, it come from myself or the city manager or the chief, simply for concern that I want to do this right away, and I don't, to be honest, want to have to go through council to confirm a letter that you agree with or don't agree with. And if I may, I'll, I'll say, I disagree with Daryl. Twice is not okay. Once is bad. This is not something that we're going to be light on. I disagree that it shouldn't happen the first time. And I'm not a gun owner, but I do know there's a pretty simple gun rule, I think it's being violated here. And I don't know the exact wording, but you're supposed to know where you're shooting and what's behind it.
That's right.
And so, this is unacceptable. I've talked to the chief. I've talked to Polk County Legal Counsel. We followed up with the five individuals who Polk County sheriffs contacted, and the property owner is cooperative. But I, I think I'd like to look into a few other options and include the Salem City Attorney in this because I did not, and I appreciate the update. I don't know how fast Salem is growing over there. The move, moving the practice area may be moving the problem, and that's, that's going to be a concern to Salem. So, and I'd be glad to take any comments from council now or later with regard to what should be in that letter. But we, we will be moving very quick, quickly on this, to the degree we can. And it's unfortunate with the inter-jurisdictional issues here. The fact that it's outside the city limits of Salem makes it difficult, of course. If it was inside, then it wouldn't, it simply wouldn't be allowed, I believe. And it wouldn't be in Kaiser. It's illegal to fire. And I think it's generally illegal in most cities. But, but I'd be glad to take any direction council would like to give, but that would be my preference.
Well, one would be, and then I'll come to you, Councilor Herrera, would be that if the city of Salem is using that facility, they need to know that the property owner, that people using that property have been irresponsible. And so, if they want to be affiliated with that property, that they might want to take another look. And I know you said it's not a business, but if the city of Salem is using it for free?
I, I would not be surprised that they are using it for free. Oftentimes, property owners would allow police to, to practice drills and practice on other property.
We use a number of ranges, DOC and Dallas PD range. We also shoot when we can't get on there, up at a farmer's property just north of Kaiser.
Okay. But the, you've worked out things where there's, and you're absolutely right. We have, within my family, folks who are very responsible gun owners, and they will go shooting. But you're right, you're supposed to know where the thing's going.
That's my point.
Councilor Herrera?
You pretty much said what I was going to say, but I really do agree with getting something out there in the strongest possible terms. And, you know, this, I just can't imagine. I mean, I'm blown away by thinking of the bullet thing, but you're right, once is too much, and I want to find out what legally we can do because the, you know, let them know. And it sounds like Mr. Davis is a pretty good guy. Is that what I'm hearing, Mr. Owner?
Well, I hear conflicting reports.
Well, I, I guess, you know, I guess my point is to cooperate and talk to the guy, like you have been doing, follow up, and tell them how serious the council is about this because this is deadly.
I think what happened last Sunday, well, it's rather obvious what happened. You had a handful of guys out there shooting trap with shotguns, and then somebody got the harebrained idea to try to shoot trap with a, with a long gun, with a rifle. The two don't mix. Maybe if you had a long, slow back, long, low backdrop and a long run at the clay pigeon, that would work. But, and obviously, they spent a lot of rounds over into Kaiser. And of course, no one would admit to doing that, so Polk County was left with what they had. If, if somebody had have gotten hurt over here, by the way, somebody mentioned if it had have been a person's crime, what would we have done? Well, it would have been altogether a different matter, including forensics to figure out who had been shooting the gun, et cetera, et cetera. But I, I'm not suggesting it was a one-off, but I think there was just some real redneck behavior last Sunday, or Sunday a week ago, that resulted in what it did, unfortunately.
Councilor Ryan? No? You have one more? Okay, one question. Come out to the microphones so people on television can hear you.
Even though perhaps the city of Kaiser legally doesn't have any recourse other than a strong letter, do we as citizens perhaps have a case or reckless endangerment as a class-action suit against this property owner? Because it scared the crap out of us.
Oh, I...
See what I'm saying?
I, I see what you're saying, and it's very scary for sure. We cannot give that guidance. That would be something for you to take up with, with an attorney.
I was hoping to get a freebie doggone.
Yeah, sorry.
All right, thanks.
But I think getting the word out there about what's going on over there, because I know a lot of very responsible gun owners who really get irritated when somebody does something, what did you call it, harebrained? Redneck? Stupid with something that you need to respect so thoroughly. You have to respect that weapon and what it can do to be a responsible gun owner and user. So, they're not going to take kindly to it either. So, I really appreciate everybody coming tonight. There will be follow-up, and as we get word that what we can share with the community, we will definitely get that out, and we fully expect that this will not happen again.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. So, this is still time for public testimony. Is there anyone here who want to address the council on any other matter this evening other than on the agenda? And I do have, Mr. Thompson, you are signed up, and you want to talk to us about item 8A. So, this is not up for a public hearing, and because it is not a quasi-judicial matter in consultation with the city attorney, it is the council's discretion whether we will take additional testimony. And prior to the meeting, I ascertained that the council said yes. So, Mr. Thompson, I would invite you up to talk about item 8A. For people who don't have the agenda open in front of them, item 8A is an ordinance amending the Kaiser Development Code regarding section 2.309, site and landscaping design, amending ordinance number 98-389.
Thank you for your consideration, and while this seems very not pressing compared to the last one, but here we go. Mayor Clark and members of the city council, my name is Jonathan Thompson. I live here in Kaiser. My wife and I own a local small business. I'm a member of the Kaiser Chamber Board of Directors and Chair of their Government Affairs Committee. I'm here on behalf of the chamber and its members. I'm here tonight in opposition to the proposed amendments to the ordinance that you just stated, dealing with landscaping and amenities. We would like to see a more collaborative approach to these issues discussed in the amendment. Fundamentally, we're concerned with increasing, always a concern with increasing regulation in Kaiser, and this to us feels like one more fee. Alone, it's probably not a huge deal, but it can't be taken alone. Businesses in Kaiser have multiple levels of requirements from both, multiple jurisdictions. In our business, just taking a, one small one, we recently expanded and moved to a larger office, and in order to transfer, transfer our X-ray machines, the state required us to pay a very substantial fee to transfer the machines. And then, less than a year later, we got to pay another substantial fee, very similar to the first one, which will let the coincidence go, in order to relicence the machines that we had just moved. The fees just keep piling up. And I understand there's some recent projects that have caused some heartburn. We are not unsympathetic to those concerns. However, I mean, bolt with these projects, and one of them, how long have we been trying to get a new grocery store? And we got it. It was on the front page of the newspaper more times than I can count, and our local representative had a town hall about it. In another case, we got private investment on River Road, and something this, this community has put in pushing for, for a long time. Again, in my wife and my's case, we just, we just finished investing literally thousands of dollars in landscape upgrades around our business. Our neighbors did the same. Remodeling by Classic Homes just did a wonderful job on a building they brought, they bought along River Road. So, local businesses are making the investments discussed in these amendments. We urge you to hold up on these amendments, and let's get some folks around the table to see if we can work out something that works for everyone. It's my hope we can do more with a carrot and less with a stick. Business in Kaiser has a long history of stepping up, from improvements that we all make every day, to the Iris Festival, to tree lightings and holiday parades. We urge you tonight to start a conversation. Let's see if we can come up with something that accomplishes the goals of this amendment with the proverbial carrot. Thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you very much. Very well said. Are the questions for Mr. Thompson? Councilor Ryan?
Where were you when we needed this testimony?
Well, I have to say that this one did slip past us. I was out of town for a while this summer, and it, we got, we got nothing, but it slipped past us. We, we sent it out in the newsletter for our chamber, just kind of as a heads-up last week, and we send many things out in our newsletter, and from what I understand, there was some response, so...
You can see the importance of showing up.
I, I get it, but we're all volunteers here as well, so we only have so much bandwidth.
Absolutely. I just, we could have, there's a couple of us who could have used the testimony.
Sure. Understood.
And that's, and that's a complaint that we hear often, is a lot of times, it's after the fact.
Sure.
Oh, I didn't know I got the opportunity to talk about that, or I didn't hear about that, or, you know, where, how was that posted? And there's been a lot of conversation on that, and we've really tried to do social media, and all of our agendas are posted in a very, everything's very transparent.
And I'm not faulting you guys for, for me being late to the party.
I just wish there was a way to get it prior to...
Fair enough.
You know, and so, I completely sincerely appreciate your testimony and wish we could find a way to do that a little bit better, and we're open to suggestions for that, too.
Sure.
Thank you.
So, I have a question. You did remodeling.
We did landscape upgrades.
You did the landscape.
Yeah, we didn't do any remodeling, so...
Okay. So, the threshold that we, that's proposed in this amendment is, or the change, is 100,000 and up.
Correct.
So, the smaller remodels, am I correct?
That's for the amenities.
Yeah, I think there's two different issues, and Jonathan can confirm this. I think the concern of the chamber is focused on the 1% issue.
Well, we, we got, we got feedback on both.
Okay. Well, let's, let's split those up because there is a $100,000 threshold for any remodeling or expansion, or any expansion, $100,000 for the landscaping requirements to kick in, but there is no minimum or maximum with regard to the 1% amenities. So, any project that, that gets built would either pay a 1% at their option or provide 1% worth of amenities as, as listed in it. So, they're really two separate issues. It's one amendment, one chapter, but it's two separate issues. And, and I didn't, I'm not sure what the issue is with regard to the general change in the landscaping, so if you want to express that, Jonathan. But my understanding is the issue on 1%. So, somebody comes in with the smallest remodel, and this was the Planning Commission's recommendation, as I recall. They felt that even a small one should pay their share, and if they didn't want to actually try to do a project, they could pay 1% towards the public art fund. And, and then the flip side is there was no maximum either, so it would be 1% of a multimillion-dollar project, too, the, the way the council decided, the way the Planning Commission recommended.
So, Madam Mayor, perhaps I could just briefly try to put it, attempt poorly, however. So, the $100,000 threshold that you're talking about is when we would, for example, make a business, come back to their parking lots and make sure that they have parking lot trees and those kinds of things, which all new construction does. So, we tried to set a high threshold there so that the, the average... So, we tried to set a high threshold there so that the, the average, um, kinds of businesses that we see along River Road are, they're not, they're not dealing with this. Typically, what we saw was the expansion of River Road that modified a lot of people's parking. There are very few parking lots along River Road that fully comply. Um, but, at the same token, we didn't want just a, a minor interior remodel to trigger a massive cost for the parking lot upgrade. So, we set that threshold fairly high. As far as the 1%, um, staff had originally proposed a minimum threshold. Um, the Planning Commission basically talked, um, about it, and it was their recommendation after considering, and Kyle Duran, who is, I'm sorry, the name of his business is-
Remodeling by Classic Homes.
Remodeling by Classic Homes, thank you, sorry. Uh, sorry, Kyle. So, we, we had a discussion, and he's on the Planning Commission, and we asked him, "So, how much did you spend on your remodel?" And that was, it was about $10,000, is what he said. Um, well, a $10,000 remodel is only $100 towards something that would be oriented to a public amenity. It would not, it's not, it, and I know it's easy, and perhaps I contributed to the confusion, the 1% for art kind of thing was ours, our, that's what triggered our thought process to try and examine this, but it is not a 1% for art program. It is a 1% for the community program. The intent is that 1% of the, of the costs of the project would be created for some sort of public amenity above and beyond the bare minimum of what the code requires. And that would include things like water features, or sculptures, or benches, site furniture, all of those kinds of things that our code does not address at all. Um, now, we recognize that there are some big projects out there. We're going to be talking about later an amendment, and I, I don't want to necessarily encourage Alan to come up to the testimony table, but, uh, what we're talking about is perhaps an $8 million project. That, right there, means that there's a price tag of $80,000. Um, but the reason that we have tried to make this non-punitive, I think, um, that we had talked about after, after Planning Commission, it's not our intent to put undue burden on the small business owners particularly. And that's why the 1% threshold is intended to be so low. Um, and yes, I know that $100 adds up here and there, but I also know, too, that, um, it is not a major component of these projects. Now, $80,000 sounds like a lot of money. $8 million is a heck of a lot more money. Um, now, the other aspect of the reason we're not making this punitive is we have built into the thing, it is extremely flexible. You just have to demonstrate to us how you are going above the bare minimum of the code. Uh, for example, when Kaiser Permanente and, and had done their project, um, they installed a water feature. And yes, water features, and I did, we did have a good discussion with them early on. But if we had an uncooperative developer, which fortunately we did not, we would not have been able to get the water feature that they installed. Um, that water feature, I, we, not, you know, just off the top, Alan said it was probably around 30,000 or 40,000 dollars to build that water feature. Those are the kinds of things that we have said, "We want the flexibility, we will work with the developers, we will be creative in how we get these amenities that are oriented to the community." Um, now, so, I, that's, just to refresh you, I, I'm, um, Councilor Herrera, I don't know, were you here for the first part of this?
This is the first part.
Okay, yeah. So, anyway, I just wanted, I just wanted to catch you up on what, what the concept is, and the reason why it's being proposed. Our, our code is very, um, minimal in its approach to development. We do not, we do not require off-site exactions, we do not require a lot of things that a lot of other communities do require. Our system development charges are literally a fraction of other cities' system development charges. Now, that's, that's not like, oh, well, there, that's justification in and of itself, because the SDCs are governed by a specific process. I'm just trying to create a perspective as to how we propose to get amenities for our community and get these businesses that are not really part of our community, they're, they're investing in our community, they will become part of our community, but, um, their, their current perspective is not. So, that's, that's the reason for these thresholds.
So, what I'd like to do, um, and I, I know that, uh, Councilor Ryan and others would like to continue the conversation, we're going to have this conversation as part of item 8A. So, what I want, uh, us to do as a body is to take into consideration the, um, you know, your testimony tonight, and then we will be able to continue this under, um, item 8A. Um, unless somebody has a direct question for Mr. Thompson, I'd like to go ahead and make sure we, uh, get to that, um, agenda item. Mr. Johnson?
Um, Madam Mayor, you may want to see if there's anybody else that wants to comment on that at this time.
I absolutely agree. All right, any other, um, questions for Mr. Thompson? Thank you very much for coming, and I-
Thank you all.
Appreciate your, uh, your testimony very much. And I saw Mr. Rudehouse's hand went up, so I think he's going to come and speak to a similar issue. And just your name and city of residence for the record.
Alan Rude, Alan Rudehouse, McMinnville, Oregon. And Madam Mayor and council members, nice to be back.
Good to see you.
Sure, a lot of you don't know me, because the faces have changed. Um, I would like to point out one discrepancy, um, in the, um, discussion. If Target were being built today, it would cost somewhere around $6 million to build a 130,000 square foot building. The building that's going to be under discussion later, that has a, a cost of, uh, basic shell site and, uh, basic tenant improvements, is a dental office building. And that's going to be in the six to eight million dollar range. We're trying to figure that out right now. So, you've got a 14,800-foot building that's costing more than 130,000 square foot Target building, and I think there is, uh, a disconnect there, and that maybe it could be, uh, addressed by some kind of cap. I don't know whether you'd do it, uh, as, uh, as a function of total cost, or whether it might be as a function of cost per square foot, but, uh, the economic impacts of a 14,800 square foot dental office building and a Target aren't even comparable. But, you're ending up charging a much higher fee to the smaller, uh, impact, uh, operation, just because in a modern facility, a medical facility, the, the cost of the improvements to house all the special equipment and everything is so much higher. So, I just thought it might be interesting to consider that. Any questions?
All right. I very much appreciate hearing your thoughts on that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak to this, or any other subject, uh, under public testimony tonight? Oh, I do have one more person signed up, and that would be Colleen Bush. She's going to talk to us about chariots and, um, residents. Oh, as a representative of chariots and as a resident of Kaiser. Thank you.
Good evening, council, Madam Mayor, staff. My name's Colleen Bush. I live in Kaiser on Noon Avenue. I'm also the, uh, member of the Board of Directors for Salem Kaiser Transit. I am not officially here for them. I just want to speak as a resident for the project that's going to be happening regarding to, um, item 8B, the signalization on, um, Kaiser Station Boulevard, going from connecting that area and making it easier for the buses to have a right-hand turn rather than to continually turn, I mean, to have a left-hand turn rather than continually turn right and always loop around the station. So, the big improvements and the collaboration between the Transit District and the City of Kaiser is something to be applauded. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for, uh, Ms. Bush? Thank you so much for being here tonight, and we're looking forward to that signal going in as well, it's going to make it much more efficient for everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. That was everybody as signed up, now that I've remembered where I put all my blue pieces of paper. Anybody else who would like to address the council tonight? Okay, thank you very much. That takes us to public hearings. Uh, we have one public hearing tonight. It is a minor amendment to the Kaiser Station Area A Master Plan. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Johnson?
Thanks for flagging me correctly.
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and council. Before staff gives the staff report, since this is a quasi-judicial hearing, we have an official statement that we like to read for the record. For those of you here for, uh, this case on, um, the Area A Amendment to the Master Plan, please pay attention to following announcements. The applicable criteria are set forth in the staff report. They're quite voluminous, uh, because it is a master plan amendment, and I will suggest waiving the exact reading of all the criteria if there's no objection. Hearing no objection will deem that to be waived. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards the criteria, or other criteria in the plan or land use regulations which you believe apply to the decision. Any failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the council and the parties, an opportunity to respond to that issue would preclude appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on such issue. At this time, I would last, ask the council if there's any ex parte contacts, bias, or conflict of interest that they disclose those, and for the, um, uh, audience, if there's any objections to those, or objections to jurisdiction or opportunity to be heard, that you've put those on the record at this time. Are there any statements from council? Um, the only other item is with regard to the applicant. The applicant needs to realize that the failure of the applicant to raise constitutional other issues related to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the council or its designee to respond to that issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. And with that, if there's no further questions, I'll turn it over to Nate.
Any questions?
Now that we have the opening credits out of the way. So, before you tonight is a consideration of updating the master plan for-
I'm going to hit a pause, though, because I believe I need to open the public hearing at this point.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So, I'm opening the public hearing. Mr. Brown?
Okay. Is a, uh, an amendment to the master plan for Area A, this is going back a ways, and, um, it was actually, uh, set in motion when the permit was issued for Kaiser Permanente. There was an original, uh, approval shown on the master plan as 100,000 square foot. Actually, in the, uh, traffic impact analysis, it was 120,000 square feet. Regardless, what is being proposed now is, uh, instead of the one office building that was established in the original master plan, it's over here, um, on the floor, um, set up there, was in, envisioned that it would be a multi-story office building of, depending on what you're reading or what you're looking at, either 100 or 120,000 square feet office building with all of its parking and such. When the Kaiser Permanente, uh, facility was built, it was intended at that time that there would be another sister facility, uh, another office building that would have, use the remaining part of the property. Um, and they were put on notice at that time that at such time, it would require a master plan amendment. Well, we are here now, and they are now pursuing the construction of a, another facility on that, on that site. So, what you have in your packets and on the board here on top is their proposed master, their, their proposed site plan, and in the material, you'll see, um, all of the, um, proposed findings, the materials, um, and the, the reason you don't have an elevation there is because it is intended in design to be similar, very similar to what is, uh, already constructed. So, um, we, the comment period was open, uh, we have received, um, virtually no comments of everybody saying this is consistent with what the master plan was intended. Um, and so, basically, we are, um, and I, I do need to, just so we don't get hung up on, I titled it "Minor Amendment," but there's no such thing in the code of a minor, or major, or simple, or small. It was just a descriptor word to say, "This is a very small amendment to the master plan." All of the conditions of approval, almost all of them, are unchanged from all the, the design work that we have been doing throughout Kaiser Station Area A. Um, the impacts to traffic are significantly reduced. The, uh, the design considerations will be identical to the kind of development that was established. So, uh, with those reasons, staff is recommending that you, um, receive any additional testimony in this hearing, um, and that you direct staff to prepare an order, order to adopt the proposed amendments to the master plan, Area A master plan of the Kaiser Station plan.
All right, are there any questions from council regarding the staff report? Okay, seeing none. I have nobody signed up for the public hearing. Is there anybody who would like to address the council? I thought you might. If you would just introduce yourself, um, name, city of residence, and then, um, your affiliation, please.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Dana Craftcheck. I'm Alangi's attorney with Perkins Coie, here on behalf of the applicant. Uh, my business is in Portland, Oregon. Um, thank you for, for taking our testimony. We're really here just to answer any questions. Nate did a terrific job explaining it. Um, this is a really limited issue before you. We're not changing conditions, we're not changing lot lines, we're not changing intersections. Um, we're essentially changing the use from an office building to a very high-quality, expensive, medical slash dental office building, and reducing the size from what was previously approved. Um, what you're getting out of this is, um, increased diversity of jobs, um, high-value investment in your community that supports the commercial uses that are there, and a reduction in traffic. Um, so really, a win-win-win in, in our mind. Um, but, would like to see if you have any questions. We've got the team here, Jeff Benner, the architect, and Alan Rudehouse, uh, the developer, in case you have any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions? Councilor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I'm with you. My, I think my question would be, does the conversation of the, the new 1% retro there, because their plans are already approved, if we make the amendment, how does that affect the, the 1% of the conversation that we had prior? Are, are they excluded?
Um, when you say the previous, you're talking about the first phase?
We've already approved this. I mean, we've, with the exception of the changes, if I'm following you.
Okay.
So, they would have, it would have been approved, and, um-
Well, okay, if, if I'm following your question correctly, correct me if I'm not. Um, so, would, because they're here for the master plan amendment, does that then get, establish the goalpost rules for a fee that would be levied as part of, at time of permit? The short answer is no, it would not.
Okay.
Um, the proposal for you and the other issue is something that is assessed at the time of permit. So, the, and this is, this is what they have to go through to apply for a permit first.
And is, is their permit already?
No.
So, because it's changed, is that, is that correct?
Well-
It's changing?
Yes, they don't have, they don't have land use approval to apply for two separate buildings. That's what they are getting established today. So, they don't have, right now, they need this amendment in order for them to apply for a future building permit, which they're working very hard on, um, and so, maybe it's a bit of a race, I don't know. Uh, we will, I don't know.
Okay, and you understand my question about, right, it sounds like about retro, about so that they would be excluded from the fees that were-
They are not there.
I think what your question gets at is, are we vested? At what point is the code-
It's almost like a grandfathered in.
Right, locked in.
Yeah.
Um, and typically, it's when you file for your discretionary review permit. And typically, it's when you file for your discretionary review permit, like design review or development review. One could possibly make the argument that a master plan vests you, and we haven't evaluated. But if a, a condition of approval or finding of council's intent to exclude or cap a, a future 1%, given the value of the building, it might be something worth discussion.
Which is a future separate discussion. Understood. All right, thank you.
So I have one question for you, and this might go to someone else on the team. I'm noticing that the building that's being proposed is clean across the parking lot from the medical facility. I'm just wondering why maybe that was part of the original master plan when it would seem logical to have the two buildings close to each other for people to easily walk back and forth, because we get rainy days like today.
The, the building will probably be a dental building, not a, a medical building. We're using the term "medical" in a more umbrella sense. So probably not typical that someone would have an appointment in both locations. Also, we feel like having it on the street helps with that street edge and makes it an attractive sector of the master plan. And it's where development had been intended initially, to, to balance that, that quadrant of the master planned area.
And I think it's also transit, more transit accessible, being right near, there, near the sidewalks, if I remember correctly, from the layout in that area. Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to this particular issue? All right. Is there anything else that we need to add before we close the hearing? Mr. Johnson?
No. And however, Madam Mayor, you may want to leave the hearing open in case there's... I mean, if you're ready for a motion, then you need to close a, close the hearing. If there's any further questions, though. It doesn't appear there's any further questions to anybody. Never mind then.
Or incredible lack of curiosity.
Okay.
Counsel Herrera, did you have a question?
No.
No? Okay. Then with that...
I will say that it was explained well by your city attorney to me. And I, I don't see any...
Okay, now close the public hearing. And Counsel Ryan, did you want to put the motion on the table for us?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move to make a motion to amend the Kaiser Development Code regarding Section 2.309, Site and Landscaping Design, Amending Ordinance Number...
Oh, back up, back up. We're, we're on this one.
Sorry, which one?
We're in the wrong.
Uh, we're on 7A.
Oh, minor amendment, sorry.
The minor amendment.
Minor, yeah, the minor amendment.
Minor instead of major, okay.
So at the bottom of, or midway on page...
7A, correct?
Yes, 7A, yes.
Thank you, apologize. So, Madam Mayor, I move to amend the minor amendment to Kaiser Station Area A master plan.
And, okay, so need to amend, to direct staff to prepare an order adopting the proposed amendments to the Area A master plan approval. Moved and seconded. Right?
I've seconded, yes.
Okay, moved and seconded. All right, discussion on this issue? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously with three absent. Rise, go forth, and make beautiful building. Very excited about this one. All right, that takes us then into administrative action. And Item 8A is an ordinance amending the Kaiser Development Code regarding Section 2.309, Site and Landscaping Design, Amending Ordinance Number 98-389. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Attorney Johnson.
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and council. This matters before the council. After the hearing on this issue, this is the landscaping and design issue that was discussed earlier this evening. We've prepared an ordinance for your review, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions? Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm, I'm wondering with the, this is clarification with, from everyone, if, if we have question from the developers that were here tonight about a cap or... And of course, testimony from, on behalf of the chamber local businesses. Is this something, I realize we don't have our full council, that we can postpone and have further discussion on? Or did we, did we close that door at the last meeting? I'm just curious where we stand on that, because I, you know, we're hearing different suggestions and options. And is that something that we can have a further discussion on with full council? Or is that something that is, we are past the timing on that?
I believe that we have the option of saying that we want to, and I may not have the right Roberts Rules of Order words for this, that we would, if we want to put it...
Continue to date certain.
Continue to date certain, and then we could also list any issues or concerns that we want further work on. So yes, we can do that.
So I'd like to make a, is it a motion to postpone?
It, it's not postpone. It's typically, and I'd be glad to talk about all the differences later, but I'm sure you don't want to hear the, the details of motion to table. Do you want?
Get it right.
It's for you, Chris.
No, not at all.
You want to do it afterwards, or?
We'll have a tutorial on Roberts Rules of Order.
Sorry, Madam Mayor. The proper motion, I believe, would be, if you want to wait, is that you move it, a motion to continue to date certain. So a motion to continue the discussion to a date certain. And which I assume would be next meeting, but it's up to you folks, whatever day you want to choose.
And would that allow further testimony from...
So I'm glad you asked that, Counsel Ryan. Your choices are to just move forward and adopt the ordinance tonight, if there's sufficient votes to do so, to just make a motion to continue to a date certain, or to move to reopen the hearing. So you, since this is, and, and by the way, just, I try to get in my lessons when I can. The, this, because this is legislative, you don't need to reopen the hearing. But if it was quasi judicial, like the Area A master plan amendment, the Area B master plan amendment, which is quasi judicial, you couldn't even take this testimony tonight. If you wanted to hear additional information, you'd have to do a formal motion to reopen the hearing. Because it's legislative, you don't have to. So that is the third choice. You could decide that, that not only do you want to wait, but you want to wait and take additional testimony. If you did so, then the, the proper motion would be to, to move to reopen the hearing. And that would require us to, to publish notice in the paper and set a hearing date.
So in terms of direction, is there a, a sense of this portion of the council to reopen the hearing? Or to, to continue to, what's the word?
Date certain.
Continue to, to date certain, which would be our first meeting in October, which I believe is October 2nd. And I, if I remember correctly, everybody is back at that point, when we can have a more robust conversation on the issue.
And I, I will caution council, although it was legislative and the council by consensus allowed the testimony under public testimony, if you at all want to hear any additional testimony, you should reopen the hearing. If you feel like you've heard, you heard the argument's pretty basic, and you don't really need to hear more, but what I would really caution you against is, you know, if, if you don't, if you want to just make a decision next meeting when the whole council is here and not reopen the hearing, you need to, to discourage that, because it isn't fair theoretically to, you know, the two people out there maybe that might be interested in this that don't get noticed and it's not a public, not necessarily noticed as a public hearing, that's all. But, so that's up to you.
Counsel Reed?
This is a question for Mr. Brown. Was this, was this discussed in the planning commission as far as the big-ticket items? And so this was thoroughly discussed and gone over at, at the planning commission level before they put forth this, before they put forth this recommendation?
Yes, I, as you had your planning commission update today. Planning commission has given thorough discussion about all text amendments, this particular one. The issues that were, that we're wrestling with right today were fully discussed at planning commission. Now, the only thing that I heard tonight that was a bit of a... Out of what I was already identified, was the fact that the proposal for this new dental facility that we're talking about, they are already in negotiations, and they have already developed. They're, they have already contacted the city and, and gotten a, a complete breakdown estimate of what their charges would be. And this ticket item was obviously not on that list. And so I just want to be in full disclosure. The reason that it is a, a bit of a surprise for these developers in particular is because they were already in process. Now, having said that, it is also, these are the opportunities that we get to have something that's meaningful for our community. The $100 fee that would be paid as a result of a $10,000 remodel is not going to get us very far down the road to doing story polls or other public art or those kinds of things. So my commitment to them, and as I had my conversation with them, we will work together, and we will use that flexibility to create things that are something that I think would serve both the business as well as the community, so.
Thank you.
So I have one question. And if I need to, with some of these questions, if you feel that we need to reopen the public hearing, then I will pause to do so. The, the statement I made earlier was because I did not fully understand the nexus between Section A and Section E. And I'm not sure it's very clear, at least it was not to me, that Section A is reopening, is saying that for a project of a certain size, you will comply regardless if you are staying within the footprint of the building or, or not, that you will comply with landscaping requirements. I get that. But with E, you're saying above and beyond. Are the landscaping requirements under A and those costs being a factor of that 1%? Or is this 1% above and beyond that?
The intent is this 1% is above and beyond the minimum requirements of the development code. Those, those requirements, we did not change those requirements. It's simply the applicability of when they are triggered. When you build a building in Kaiser, you have those landscaping requirements. The, the $100,000 threshold is basically, that's when we would say we are treating this as new construction. For example, when both Ware Mart and Taco Bell. Basically, Taco Bell was a $2.5 million project as well. But because they were within the footprint, we, and again, Taco Bell, we, we get great compliance, and they're good corporate citizens. But we, we don't have any authority to extract for the community these kinds of amenities that we have set the standards for in our River Road Renaissance Plan. So, and, and so it's that threshold that we're trying to, to establish so that we, as the city, have the tools that we need to say, you know, when you have a large project, we want you to comply with the standards that have been established. So that's what the larger threshold is. The, the 1% for amenities is intended to say we want anybody that's investing in our community to invest in not just their bottom line, but the community's livability and all of the quality of life issues that we try to get through master plans and through all the stuff that we do.
So I have a follow-up, and then I'll come back to you, Counsel Ryan. Mr. Rudehouse made a point that there are some buildings that cost more per square foot than others. A retail office and a medical office, even if they occupy the same square footage, are going to have vastly different doll, construction cost per, per square foot. And yet, the impact visually on the outside would be very similar. And that is not something I had considered. So it gave me pause to how do we deal with like-to-like when you are asking a developer to add amenities? You know, like you said, a Target versus a medical facility. Let's say, just for theoretical, that they occupy the same square footage or the same footprint, but they're very vastly different. Was that discussed in, in the formulation? And is that where that min max would kick in? Had that been considered at that time?
Well, directly, I don't believe that specific question was. But we did have a thorough discussion about corporate responsibility. And it's very difficult, from our perspective, to get into, oh, well, what is your, what's your profit margin versus what's your profit margin? You know, what, a retail, what's the profitability of the retail versus... I mean, the reason those buildings cost so much more is because they are, and they're a benefit to the community. Again, this is not intended to be punitive, but it's a matter of saying, we're trying to establish a corporate responsibility for, this is what your responsibility to the community is. And the most direct and the most straightforward way for us is to establish it based on the cost of the project. You know, is, is, should Nike be assessed less than Intel? Who knows? So what we're talking about are physical amenities. We are talking about physical assets. And therefore, that's the reason why it's so easy to have that correlation between the physical cost of their project. As opposed to looking at return statements or who knows what else we may, may wish to choose. You have flexibility. You can establish the thresholds. I just, that's the correlation, and that's the, that's what we have direct access to, is the, the cost of the project.
And I understand that, but where, where Mr. Rudehouse gave me some pause and, you know, no offense, Mr. Thompson, that was very well spoken, but that was something that I had really not thought of, was the different building types and the cost per square foot between a retail facility, which is basically a shell and shelves. Okay, I'm oversimplifying. I get that. Versus a medical facility, which is far more complex. And I, I need to give that some thought for myself to understand, is that something that other programs that are similar to this have taken into consideration? Or is it pretty much an industry standard, 1% across the board? I don't care what kind of building it is. I understand corporate responsibility. I also understand, you know, equity. Making sure that we are, what we're asking of a developer and a project that makes sense in terms of the investment in the community. So I'm, I'm thinking here. Counsel Ryan?
Madam Mayor, thank you. You know, food for thought as we're... Am I? I am. I may need to be louder. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I know you've heard me mention this before, but I, I look at the, I look at the bigger picture and, and the cost that it, it's costing our local business, which we talked about. You know, whether it be a Ware Mart at 2.5 million or a new build, a new business that we're asking, new business to try to attract to come into Kaiser. And I don't, I don't, I think with all of our landscape codes and our building codes and our colors and all of that that we have in our ordinances, I don't see that it's businesses' responsibility to continue to be required to invest more money when they're already choosing Kaiser. I, I fear that we will set a precedence and lose future business. And, and you've heard me say that before, obviously as a business advocate. But what I'd like is, it sounds like there's some, there's, in light of the new information and in, in seeing Counsel Herrera agreeing to hear more, more testimony, can we, and as a council, maybe I make a motion to open, reopen the, the hearing, hear more public testimony, really weigh in, maybe take the time to find out that question, what does 1% across the board look like? Or is that how it's being implemented in other areas? I haven't heard of that before, before we've done it, so I don't have an answer to that as well. But I, I think, I think it, I think it begs for another conversation and more testimony and a serious look at, at setting the precedent. So I would make that motion to come back as a full council at the next meeting, reopen. It gives us time to do our due diligence.
So your motion is, let me make sure I've got it straight, is to reopen the hearing and to continue, or... And I've, I've lost the right word for that, but to continue to... to continue, or, I've lost the right word for that, but to continue to date certain, which would be on the second?
Sure, with full council, and of course, the opportunity for future testimony, public testimony. And then that way, it's fair to everyone, and including those who are not present tonight.
There's a motion, is there a second? Okay, motion dies for lack of second.
I'd like to get some clarification, may I?
Yes.
What would be the hassle of reopening the hearing?
We just, the only, the only question is the date. And if you wanted to reopen the hearing for the next meeting, we could put it in tomorrow's paper, and it would just barely make the date, so you could do October 2nd if you wished. It's, you know, relatively minor expense.
I guess I would second that, then. I do second the motion.
Okay, you want to go ahead and second the motion. So it's been moved and seconded, that we reopen the public hearing, and then continue to date certain, which would be October 2nd. So the discussion, the purpose, as I understand it, is to make sure that, A, we have input from the entire council, B, we have additional input from community members. And there's a piece, and I had this in my notes already, even before we convened this evening, Section A and Section E, both seem to get at the landscaping and amenities issue, just a little bit different take, at a different level, but in my mind, they're both trying to address the same thing, this matter of scale. And this is where I really started pondering, what, how are we going to ensure an equitable investment on the part of businesses in the River Road Renaissance vision, the beautification of our city, you know, taking it to a better level than just, you know, some asphalt and a couple of bare trees, which also does not serve the business community well, much less the community as a whole. But I would like to see A and E somehow married, or at least dating. There are elements of both that I really think need to be brought together. If we want amenities to be part of the development, then let's say so. I'm, where, there's a lot of pushback, is the 1%. What are we really asking?
If I can try and characterize it, that the, making the existing standards applicable across the board, to me, in my mind, is not raising the bar. That's just simply giving us tools to say, these standards apply to these, to everybody. And we're not even saying that, we're saying, if you have a major project, then the existing standards apply to you. It's not raising the bar, it's just saying, this is applicable. The 1% is trying to raise the bar ever so slightly. And so in my mind, there are differences. Those existing standards, we did not change those, we did not make more street trees required, we didn't do anything to those standards. We defined them, we clarified them in a couple of cases, but those standards are already there. And that is just, this change basically says, if you do a major project, over $100,000 in value, you've got to bring your site into compliance with existing standards. The 1% is something that is new, and it is something that we are asking in a flexible and low amount for people to say, think of how you can create amenities for the citizens of Kaiser, not just what, not just focused on your business model, but on giving to the community. So, but there's a lot of ways to, you know, there's a lot of ways to think of it. Is the amount appropriate? Is how we assess it appropriate? All of those kinds of things. The most straightforward way is you have an established construction cost, and we focus on that, and we just say, 1% of that, in Kyle's case, $100, would go to either, so give us a non-required specimen tree, not even a specimen tree, $100 doesn't even get you a specimen tree, but an extra tree. Or if you, in Kyle's case, he was the one that argued, he didn't want to have to maintain an amenity, he would just as soon pay into something like the Public Art Fund, which then could be aggregated into doing something meaningful for the community. That's, so that's how those, the differences in those two, in my mind, are quite distinct.
I can't speak for anybody else. I've got no problem with A, with making sure construction projects all comply with the same code, whether you stay within the footprint or not. I have no issue with that. It's E where I started tripping up. I've thought about it, I've tried to see it from a variety of points of view, I love public art, I believe that we need to invest as a community, and that includes the businesses that are part of our community, and I don't think there's a one of them, okay, there are a few, that would not agree with that. I get that. But what I'd like to personally see is E thought through with that, the min-max, and with the idea of some, another measurable other than simply the cost of the project, because I think there may be a discrepancy or an inequity in it. So that's where my brain is going. So that is why I feel that it would be appropriate to go ahead and push forward with the motion that is on the table, so we can give this additional thought. You had your hand up, sir.
Well, I was just gonna kind of add on to what Nate said, and some of the options that Nate was saying, and you just kind of said them, Madam Mayor. A min, a max, a cap, a different way of looking at it, should it be tied to the 1%? Should it be tied to the project? You could look at simply increasing the standards, and having the standards be, because Nate is right, essentially, except for some almost minor wordsmithing, the standards themselves didn't change, it was just the threshold because of the issue that Nate raised. You could look at increasing the standards and getting away from the cost of the project. That, you know, I think staff and Planning Commission, at least, felt cost of the project was a bigger project, bigger amenities, but you could look at it, just say, you know, we'd like to see more street trees, we'd like to see more landscaping, we'd like to see more public amenities. The public amenities part is the rub, on how you define what that would be if you're not going to do a cost of the project. But there's a lot of different options that you could consider.
Well, and that's kind of the point, is that there are other options, and if, if this, if our standards are too minimal, then maybe we need to take that hard look at, what is that next step up? Rather than a 1% program, take another look at our standards themselves. I have no problem with A. Let's make sure everybody's up the same playing field now. And then I would feel comfortable revisiting E. What exactly are we trying to get out of this? And then put that into the standard. So that's where my thinking is going right now. I think some additional thought needs to go into it, so we can make sure that we have put together something that is specifically Kaiser, that gets at what we want as a community, and to make sure it applies to everybody. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one moment, let me double-check something with Nate.
Okay. Sidebar. Now we need the music.
I hear that music in my head.
Yeah, I know, I'm playing it, too.
Okay, all right.
Yep, I agree. Okay.
Okay, yeah, I just needed to confirm one thing. You can go ahead with the motion or further discussion.
All right, any further discussion on the motion?
Last.
Go ahead.
Last thing, Madam Mayor. I do, I'm shaking this, I would like to see some input from the missing counselors also, because Brice is very affiliated with business, and he's a chamber commerce guy, and I'd see some of his input, so that would be additional reason that I would like to go carry on with the motion.
All right. Council Ryan?
Well, just as, as food for thought, sitting here, listening to, of course, the example was, you know, maybe a small business is $100. You know, for example, Mr. Rudibus, who came tonight, it was $80,000. So if somebody decided, oh, I'm just gonna write a check to Art for $80,000, how many checks we're gonna get to Art? Because, for example, it's possible, I don't think that's fiscally responsible either, to say, you know, should it go into Art, should it go into parks, should it go into whatever? And I know we said Art, just because it beautifies the community, but, you know, food for thought, that's a huge difference, and that's not necessarily that out of line, when we look at the new buildings that we have coming in, and the bigger companies, and the remodels, and, you know, trying to get new business to Kaiser, you know? For example, Ware Mart would have been $25,000. So, so these are, I think, not something to take lightly. Thank you.
Counsel Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would be in favor of further discussion, further information, but I do want to also respect the work the Planning Commission has done on this, and just considering that there are costs to doing business, and there are costs to doing business in Kaiser, and the way the code is currently set up, to my understanding, is, you know, we do have lower costs in many, many respects, but this, this public amenities is, I think, an important cost of doing business in Kaiser. So just, again, I'm all for new information and further discussion, but I just wanted to kind of lay that out there as a foundation for my opinion.
I agree. It's how we get there, it's how we craft this, and I think that further discussion will help us hone that, I think maybe put a finer point on it. Again, not to take away from the Planning Commission, they did a lot of work on this. That's why there's two bodies, though, because we have two different sets of perspectives, and I think that's appropriate. Further discussion? Counsel Herrera?
No, I'm ready for the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with three absent. But they're not gonna be absent next time. All right. Thank you, everybody, for good work going forward. This takes us to item 8B. Put this paper back over again. An order in the matter of the application of the City of Kaiser for approval of an amendment of the Kaiser Station Master Plan, Area B Kaiser Station, Lot Line Adjustment and Conditional Use Case Number 2010-10, repeal of order in the application of the City of Kaiser adopted November 1, 2010. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Attorney?
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and Council. This matter came before the council forehearing, and you directed us to prepare an order for the approval of the Area A Master Plan, excuse me, Area B, too many areas here tonight. So Area B Master Plan approval, as you may recall, there's a proposed theater in the Area B part of Kaiser Station. We have prepared that order. My assistant noted that a blank got left on the first page of Exhibit C, which you'll see here, the condition at the bottom said condition blank. We were waiting to finalize that, to make sure we got our numbers correct, and then it didn't get in, so this condition number 25. So that change should be noted as amended when you're prepared to pass that motion. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions on the staff report? All right. Counsel Ryan, would you like to make the motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move a motion in the matter of the application of the City of Kaiser for approval of an amendment to the Kaiser Station Master Plan, Area B Kaiser Station, Lot Line Adjustment and Conditional Use Case Number 2010-10, repeal of order in the application of the City of Kaiser adopted November 1, 2010.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, the Kaiser City Council adopt the order in the matter of the application of the City of Kaiser for approval for an amendment to the Kaiser Station Master Plan, Area B Kaiser Station, Lot Line Adjustment and Conditional Use Master Plan Lot Line Adjustments, Conditional Use Case Number 2010-10, repeal of order in the application of the City of Kaiser adopted November 1, 2010. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with three absent. Item 8C, Resolution Authorization for Transfer of Appropriations for Police Radios and Resolution Authorizing City Manager to Purchase Police Radio System from Silky Communications and Authorizing Disposition of Surplus Property. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Wood.
Madam Mayor, City Council, as we discussed during the Budget Committee process, the City of Salem is upgrading their radio system this year. At the time of the budget process, we anticipated that the cost of the project would be about Here we are several months later, and it's about $315,000. So we're not too far off of the original mark. What we're requesting tonight is a transfer of appropriations. At the time of the budget process, we were anticipating an external financing over three years, so about approximately $100,000 a year in expense to the general fund. Like I say, it's $315,000 now. In lieu of doing an external financing, we'd like to do an internal financing, borrowing funds from the Park Improvement Fund. That fund has significant, has sufficient resources, and it will not be used during the time period of this loan, which will be a three-year loan. So with that, if you have any questions, I would be free to address those.
All right. Are there any questions on the staff report? Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So what's the longevity of this new radio system anticipated to be?
Very long-term. The last radio system we had has been in existence, I believe, over 15 years.
Okay, so we'll get our money's worth.
We'll get more than our money's worth, yes.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, further questions? All right, start with the first resolution.
Madam Mayor, I move to a motion to, for Resolution Authorization for Transfer of Appropriations for Police Radios. Do you want me to continue?
Second.
One at a time. So it's been moved and seconded, the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution Authorization for Transfer of Appropriations for Police Radios. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with three absent. Second one.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I propose a resolution, motion authorizing the City Manager to purchase police radio systems from Silky Communications and authorizing disposition of surplus property.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2017, authorizing the City Manager to purchase police radio system from Silky Communications and authorizing disposition of surplus property. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That takes us, with three absent, that takes us to the consent calendar. Counsel Ryan, do you want to read the consent calendar?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A, Resolution Authorizing City Managers to Enter Into a Lease Agreement with Rico USA Inc. for Police Department Copiers. B, Resolution Declaring the City's Intent to Initiate a Street Lighting Local Improvement District, the Galena Court, and Directing the City Engineer to Make a Survey and File a Written Report with the City Recorder. C, Resolution Declaring the City's Intent to Initiate a Street Lighting Local Improvement District, the Pine Crest Edition, and Directing the City Engineer to Make a Survey and File a Written Report with the City Recorder. D, Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Enter Into an Agreement with Trench Line Excavation Inc. for Kaiser Station PAD, D Water Line Relocation. E, Resolution Authorizing City Manager and Chief of Police to Sign Amendment 1 to DA-CMS Usage Intergovernmental Agreement. And F, Approval of August 21, 2017 Regular Session Minutes.
All right, are there any pulls? No pulls. Counsel Ryan? Move the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the consent calendar as read.
Second.
The consent calendar has been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with three absent, which means we're going to have a pretty short go on council liaison reports. Shall we start with you, Counsel Herrera?
Sure. I had a sort of a busy week, a little bit of stuff, school's back on, so we're starting up with leadership in October. Attended the Marion County Public Safety Coordination Committee, right? All right. And I took the opportunity to praise our local police department, because of the discussion went around. We got... went around, we got briefed on the Eclipse County, and it's quite interesting. But as far as Kaiser is concerned, we did, I thought it was very smooth, and I mentioned that. I happened to be at the baseball, so I missed out on the big party over there, but as far as everything went, it was well-done. Everything was perfect until it was all over. And then you looked at the freeway, and it's crazy. But you know what? It was a good experience. I got a lot of positive, I met a guy in the airport. Actually, I ran him to San Francisco, and he sent me an email the other day saying that it was great, he was in Kaiser. And that was pretty cool. So people enjoyed it, the people that visited, they got to know Kaiser, and I think we left a great impression. Over that, after that, I went over to the Parks Forum, which, we had about 20 people, but we still need more input. So hopefully we'll carry that on. Also, let's see, this week McNary had defeated South Salem, and they got kind of thumped by Sprague, but that's okay, they're young, and they're going to be better. So they're getting a good sophomore group, and I'm really, and I liked the post that Coach Oven put the next day after they got a good, I hate to say beating, but I'm a coach. I hate to say blue in that way, but you know what? He came back and wrote something on the post about, you know, learning something and moving forward, and, you know, just the right things for a coach to say, and made everybody feel pretty good. So we're ready. Also, we have the CTEC, which's...
For Technical Education Center.
Technical Education Center, yes. I'm bad with acronyms, and that's coming up on Monday, that's the same night of our council meeting. We also, I'm also attending a big deal for the Hispanic, by the way, this is Hispanic Heritage Month.
Yes.
Which recognizes the contribution of the Latina population or Hispanic population. And it's the whole month, been great events, and I think that's pretty much it. I do have some things coming up. Our Points of Interest Committee has been postponed to next week, and this Thursday we have a Greater Gubser Neighborhood Association meeting.
And that's the fall kickoff, right?
Yeah, it's the fall kickoff, and it should be pretty good. So that's all that I can remember.
All right. Thank you very much. Counselor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was involved with the Big Toy Bark Removal Project that you heard about during our Parks Committee Report, and it was a fantastic endeavor, and we had lots and lots of, we had over 200 volunteers out, and people on equipment, and just lots of really great things going on. And so I'd like to thank all those involved with that, and that was truly a huge effort. The LDS Church was instrumental in that, as well as community members in general. We had lots of people show up for that, and that was great to see our community working together, because that's what we do. So that was fantastic. Also, the Parks Tour you heard about, too, I just wanted to mention really quickly, that I really appreciated the positive spin on that. We've decided that parks are a priority in this community, and it was great to see the good things that have been done and the things that we have yet to do with that. So that was really instructional, and I really appreciated all the work that so many people have put into that effort. We had a Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association meeting last Friday, and we had discussed mostly the need to get lots of people involved in the community, and this is true in all of the neighborhood associations. And whether it's just recruiting more people to come to meetings, or whether it's recruiting more people to Neighborhood Watch-type efforts, or engagement with the schools, we just need more community effort. We have lots of great people working, but there is room for lots more, and we want to be able to hear all voices. So we would encourage you to consider taking advantage of that, getting involved with the neighborhood association, and making sure that your voice is heard. Also, coming up this Thursday, we have the Kaiser Network of Women Annual Fundraiser, and that's a luau, and that should be pretty fantastic, so.
Where's that?
Yes, that is here at the Civic Center.
You can't go wrong.
At 5:30. No, you can't. Kaiser Neighborhood, or Network of Women, so, yes, yes. But anyway.
Put a luau, Ken.
So, yes, come for ladies' night out.
I would be...
Ladies' night out for a luau, and it will be good fun, as always. So thank you for, thank you to that group for their efforts in also making the community great.
All right. And are you involved in the upcoming musical, Dog Park the Musical?
I was going to say that to the next meeting, because it opens October 6, but yes. Dog Park the Musical is, Kaiser Homegrown Theater is putting that on. It will be at Schmeckada Community College, and it opens October 6 and goes for the first three weekends of October. And I'm not directly involved in it, other than just helping with the production, but it should be great fun, and it's really high-quality, as all our productions are.
Always. So get that on your calendars, Dog Park the Musical. Got to see it. Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My Public Arts Committee was postponed, so we have that coming up, so I'll have a report on that at the next meeting. Kaiser United met today, and remember, that's our youth peer corps, supporting our youth in Kaiser. And it was an excellent meeting, had good attendance today. We're all trying to grow that group. If you know some people that would like to attend, we'd love to have them. Dennis Coho showed today, it was great to see him, I haven't seen him in a while, so great to see fellow Counselor Dennis. But we are still trying to bring that buckaroo ball back and get some money for the kids, so we are still working on that. Also, attended the Marion County Commissioners Breakfast, that was really fun, and really the majority of that conversation was about bringing in new jobs to Salem with the new Amazon coming in, so that's super exciting. And then also, I'll be attending with Madam Mayor the League of Oregon Cities Conference between now and the next meeting. I'm really excited about that, some great training, everything from homelessness to leadership, to a lot of great outbreak sessions and conversations. So I always appreciate the opportunity to serve and get more training, so thank you for that. And of course, the Parks Tour was very educational, inspired me to want to do my garden better next year. And if I could just maybe throw out there, I'm getting lots of, there's lots of questions in social media going on about the new law that starts October 1, and I know I've heard you speak to it, but maybe if we could put something on Kaiser Police Social, you know, social media, kind of outline, there's a lot of miscommunication out there, so maybe we could put specifics of, and that way we can all refer to it and, you know, share the post, and really get it right, so it's right in the Kaiser community, if we could do that. And of course, I could follow up with someone if you'd like me to, Chief. But it sounds like that's a pretty big topic of conversation and concern, and I'd like the information to be correct, so. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you very much. Youth Counselor Hernandez.
Hello. Coming up on October 3, at 6:30, will be McNary's annual Powder Puff Game, which is a fun role reversal, where the ladies will be playing football and the guys will be cheerleading. So it'll be a fun opportunity there.
Always good.
Also, wanted to talk about, a bit about McNary's recent addition, the College and Career Center, which is a great opportunity for students to have the facility to do college track and have access to programs and information, college visits, and financial aid help, all that sorts of stuff to reach the higher education. So it's a really great opportunity, and I encourage parents to check it out, for students to check it out. Yeah.
It's so much easier with that FAFSA, if you have somebody that's the federal, the free...
Free.
That's a heck of an acronym.
It's federal.
Yeah.
I think it's federal.
Free.
Yeah.
Free's in there somewhere.
But it's an overall scholarship application, and the first time you face it, it's rather daunting. So I know that they're really trying to help students and their families get through that document and make it as easy as possible, and have a very high FAFSA completion rate, because I know it's going to get more money into the hands of students. So if you have information, or you can get, or Mrs. Reed can help us get information, we'd love to help parents get ahold of good links and information so they can get that FAFSA filled out early. So thank you for bringing that up.
And there is a website for the College and Career Center that parents can go to as well. So, yeah, that's available on the website, but yes, we can always provide more information.
That would be great. And it's cool, here we are, September, we've just gotten started, and it's like, okay, we've got to start thinking about college, and especially for seniors. I know by about midterm, you know, the seniors have really got college on the brain. So thank you for bringing that up, and we appreciate your work as our youth counselor, and for bringing us ideas and concerns and inspiration from students at McNary.
Thank you.
So thank you. I just have a couple of things to add, I know the hour is getting a little bit later. I did have an opportunity to speak at the Salem Kiwanis Lunch, and the Kiwanis were the ones that helped provide some of the funding for the new soccer practice field at Country Glen Park. So thank you to Salem Kiwanis. Also attended the Organization for the Parks Project Prioritization on the 6, and then I wasn't able to be there on the 12, but I understand, we started getting good input. We want to hear from more people with a whole lot of different perspectives on what we can do to make our parks shine. The Millamette Area Commission on Transportation, looking at the current STIP, which is the statewide transportation improvement program, oh, got it, that's because I wrote it down, with the new projects ever added courtesy of House Bill 2017, which was the transportation package. And then also looking forward to the projects that will be contained in the next STIP. Another part we're looking at, and I would encourage people to look at the website for some of the drawings, the facility plan for Highway 22 between 25th and Gaffin. Anybody who drives eastbound or to the eastern portion of the Salem Kaiser Metro area on 22 knows that we've got capacity issues, we've had safety issues in the past. So take a look at the site plan and give your input on that. Also, we are starting to get estimates when the new gas task goes into effect. What we will see in our transportation fund, the estimates we're getting so far for Kaiser will be on the order of about $860,000 per year. So that is something that we'll look forward to be able to move forward with our transportation system plan, our TSP. We already have projects teed up, and hopefully we can get more of them done more quickly. So that is good news for us, because transportation projects of any kind, they're expensive. Just a couple of other things, Kaiser Heritage Foundation Board, we are working on a memorandum of understanding between the board and the community library to help out, and we have now started the agreement between the city and the Heritage Center for managing the event room that's in the Heritage Center. So we're excited about that, and we're looking forward to that being a very successful partnership. The SEDCOR Awards Luncheon is a strategic economic development corporation, and several businesses were honored for their work. And just to give a couple of shout-outs, one of them, beating to Rich Duncan, Rich Duncan Construction, for their construction member, Construction Alliance Member, Manufacturer of the Year. Willamette Valley Fruit Company, Wilco was honored, Mill Creek, the project out there, the partnership between the state of Oregon and the county and city was honored. Business Partner of the Year, KNE, excavating and community service, went to Key Bank. So thank you to all those businesses.
Willamette Pie Company, can't leave that out.
Willamette Valley Pie Company, no, because we've got to take home little pies. Mary Berry, awesome. Also want to thank Kaiser Fire District, once again, for taking the time to remember on 9/11, the people who gave all to save so many, and to continue to be thankful for our first responders, our public safety personnel, and our community volunteers who worked together to keep our community safe. It's been a very meaningful day of remembrance since 9/11, and I'm glad that they have kept this up every single year, so we can pause and reflect and be thankful. So thank you to Kaiser Fire District. Just a couple of things coming up, there's going to be a time capsule buried at Volcano Stadium on the 21st to commemorate the eclipse. We will also, on Friday morning, I will be speaking at a program at the Croc Center on collective impact, and I'll be speaking on the homeless initiative. And then on the 28th, I will go to the West Care Veterans Home dedication, very excited about that facility as well. So that is all I've got for that. Other business, this time is provided to allow the mayor, city council members, or staff, an opportunity to bring newer old matters before the council that are not on tonight's agenda. Signature.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tracy?
I have nothing, thanks.
Tim?
Just a reminder for everyone, the sewer portion of your city services bill can be approximately 2/3 of your bill. We don't have a way to track your sewer usage, so we base your sewer usage on your consumption of water during the winter months. So we're rolling into that time of the year where it's really wise to conserve water if you can, and that's all I have.
John?
Nothing, thank you.
Go.
Nothing at night, thank you.
Nate?
Well, I've talked a lot tonight, but just to let you know, we have signed the... We have signed the intergovernmental agreement with ODOT on the education outreach grant, and that process we anticipate will begin after the 1st of the year.
Shannon?
In case anyone missed it, FAFSA is a free application for federal student aid.
Thank you.
I knew it.
I thought there was free in there somewhere.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I know about it.
Yeah. I just remember it was painful to go through the process, but I think they've gotten it easier.
Madam Mayor, for the record, just so people know, January 1 is the, like, midnight on that night, 31st is when you can send in the application, it's first come, first served. So if kids are getting ready for it, they can...
And it's not based on this year's taxes, they've made it so it can be based on previous year's taxes. That's a change that made it a whole lot easier, too.
Excellent. Amen. That's fabulous.
Can I go back to like 19?
Yeah. Let's go back to when I was in graduate school. All right. Written Communications, I don't have anything to add tonight. Agenda input, October 2, 7 o'clock, City Council in regular session, October 9 at 5:45. We have work session. Ms. Davis?
And that is also the Kaiser Fire District and Kaiser Public Works Open House evening, so I'm not sure if you went...
That would be on October 9, so I would encourage us to all attend the open house at Kaiser Fire District and Kaiser Public Works. They will have a joint open house, it's a great community event, so come on down and be a part of that. So that will be in lieu of our work session, and then on October 16, we will also meet in regular session at 7:00 PM. Is there anything else for the good of the order? It is 9:31, and we are adjourned.